Good evening. Can everybody hear? Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This is our joint meeting between the Human and Civil Rights Commission, the Des Moines City Council, and we're going to engage in a discussion and talk about a lot of the work that's been taking place. We'll get into that in a minute, but to officially start, I would like to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask the clerk to please take role of the city council, please.
County?
Here.
Fosen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Cameron Middlebrooks on the chair of the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission. At this time, I'll ask our secretary, Claudia Shabel, to call role of the commissioners.
Commissioner Middlebrooks?
Present.
Commissioner Shields?
Here.
Commissioner Shabel?
Here.
Commissioner Knox?
Present.
Commissioner Oya?
Present.
Commissioner Hunt?
Russian.
Commissioner Garza?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Mayor, if you want to give an opening welcome?
Sure. Well, again, welcome, everybody, and tonight, we're here to have our annual meeting, our joint meeting, and often, we have a good exchange and discussion. This year's a little different. From years past, as the commission has been working on a project this year called Bridging the Gap. Bridging the Gap is engaging in community dialogues on how we can address issues of safety, justice, opportunity, lack of access, discrimination, et cetera, in order to determine how we can together move forward as a community where everyone has the opportunity to succeed and grow without barriers, preventing them from moving up the socioeconomic ladder, and anything that we can do as a community, or any of our partners, citizens, everybody engaged in this process. We started this, in the past, we've had lots of discussions, but we wanted to have solutions and not just conversations. So I think that we've moved really a long ways down that path. We've engaged, Cameron, I think, 600, 650 individuals in and around the city who have participated in various parts of this process. And we are really anxious to get moving forward. And so tonight, we're going to hear from commissioners on the recommendations and what's going to happen, and to help us move forward and the community forward. And I'm going to turn it over to the commissioner. I would also like to say, if there is anyone in the room who has a disability, or a hearing problem, or something, we understood earlier in the day that there may be some individuals, and there ought to be somebody here. We didn't hear until afternoon, and so we've been trying to arrange for somebody to come to do some signing, but is there anybody here that needs that sort of service over here? I will also tell you--
--helping out with the translation.
--terrific. And also, for your accommodation, if needed, we are recording this meeting, and we can produce a transcript additionally, if that would be helpful. So anybody that needs that kind of support and access, we're here to help. So I'll turn it over to the chair. Cameron, it's yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he said, this has been a very drawn-out process for us. It's really the work, the work of this has been done over the past two and a half years. It initially started with conversations we wanted to have with the Des Moines Police Department about creating better community relationships. The initial conversation with them, we took them through President Obama's 21st Century Community Policing Document. It's been about, I'm thinking about 10 hours, 10 to 15 hours, going through that document, getting an understanding of what the police department was doing, what they had not been doing yet, and what they just simply could not do because it didn't fall under jurisdiction. Further conversations with organizations, community organizations, we thought that we needed to expand upon that and really get the community involved. So what I'm going to get ready to do is actually take you through our entire process that Bridging the Gap has been going through. So as the mayor spoke about Bridging the Gap is a community-centered and solutions-focused effort to address community issues, improving community government relations, and removing systematic barriers so that Des Moines residents have the full opportunity to reach their full potential. We did this in three different ways. We had three focus areas. One was the Safety and Justice Dialogues, and then the commission also put together two separate subcommittees, the first being the LGBTAC Advisory Council and the Refugee Immigrants Advisory Subcommittee. The Safety and Justice Dialogue format, in the month of May of 2018, we held 11 different small group meetings with a cross-section of community members. All seven members of council were present, including city directors, state legislators, county supervisors, school board members, police, and concerned citizens, and et cetera. Altogether, we spoke to nearly 200 people, and they developed, out of that, out of those conversations, we had over 200 thoughts or ideas about how we can move our community forward. The RIAS, excuse me, the LGBTAC Subcommittee conducted two listening sessions through the month of April and May of 2018, and spoke to over 40 community members about the barriers they were facing LGBTQ communities, and they also, we also incorporated their recommendations into the recommendations we'll be putting forth later this evening. RIAS, over the course of six months from May until November 2018, met with nearly 50 high school students, and over 200 residents participated in very similar dialogues to the justice dialogues, where they shared their experiences living in Des Moines. The commission also used this information and advice from the RIAS to strategize and make recommendations that will also be reflected in our documents. Then, Bridging the Gap, the concept of, so the second phase after getting feedback from the community was actually to reveal the recommendations that the community felt kind of came to the top. So we devised nine concepts that were formed from a common thread of over 200 thoughts that we got from the Safety and Justice Dialogues, including the conversations with LGBTAC and RIAS. People participated in voting for their top three concepts that they believed the city should focus on. This voting happened at four different locations over the months of September and October. Altogether, 400 residents were able to participate in this process. At this time, I can do some more talking, but we actually have the video that we would like to show you that kind of goes into what the process of the reveal was.
All of our solutions end up being community-based. It's all of us working together that are going to make progress on all these different goals.
Well, I'm here because of the nine concepts that individuals have come through through this process, and I'm here to put my vote in for my top three. I wish I could vote for them all, but they only let us vote for our top three. One is economic development, so that was my number one. You know, we need jobs in this community.
I spent more time here than I had anticipated because I had to keep going back over the options and evaluating. Honestly, I felt like they were all really good, and if we could include all of them or most of them, I think they all could add strength.
Um, it's tough. We've been here for about an hour debating and trying to figure out, you know, their positives and negatives to each, and how they're implemented, and sustainability with all the programs, and which ones will maybe be better integrated, which ones are better for the community, so it's a really tough choice.
We really like our quality of life. We like Des Moines. Des Moines is a friendly town, for us, at least, and Des Moines is a good place to work. We like our jobs, and we like our church, and we like the people that we've met, but we know that it's not always that way for other people, and we know that we want it to keep improving. And I think if we don't have forward-thinking, that it goes the other direction.
It was very difficult, actually. It was really, really difficult. I looked at inclusivity, but I, really, that theme of being inclusive ran throughout all of these, but I guess the ones that really were kind of near and dear to my heart, again, was the Community Ambassadors Program. I was really impacted by the way that they talked about wanting to recruit more youth to the program, because I think that's really a crucial component that's probably missing. I know that there are a lot of groups in our community that are working with youth, and I think it's really important that we include the youth voice in more of what we do.
I think for the council, my message is, let's fund it. You know, funding is very important. Everyone talks about, let's not just talk about money. Money helps bring these programs to fruition. Money helps to be able to educate people to deal with the phobias and the ism. Money helps when you talk about economic development. So now, we need to create that environment to where we're allowing individuals the resources to be able to better themselves.
My message for council is, it's great to have the conversation, but we need to, and it's good that the conversation is thorough and that it's long, but I think by the end of the conversation, you really got to get active. So I think it's going to be easy at the end of this to say, well, we've got nine ideas, well, I've narrowed it down to three. Over these three ideas, we're going to discuss them a little more, and then it just kind of peters out. Like, really make it as concrete and aggressive as you can to get something done at the end.
And I think it's important, as this moves on into action, to continue to have community voices. There are some great leaders in the community that should be helping to make decisions on this, and I think it's really important to build them up as leaders, or to find new leaders that are working on these programs.
Listen to the people in the communities. The power is with the people in the communities. Listen to them. They know what the concerns are, they know what the questions are. They're not always looking for you to give the answers. They know that they have the answers, so provide more platforms, be more welcoming of them when they show up in the spaces that you occupy.
Empowering and supporting and hearing the voices of the community is extremely important, and I would like to continue to attend more things such as this.
Okay, so as you saw there, by the way, my name is Emily Shields. I'm a member of the commission, and as you saw there, we invited many of you to come out to those reveal, those voting events, and you had to actually pick your top three and put the ballot in the ballot box. So what we get to reveal to you tonight is what won. Dramatic moment. So you see four posters there. I'm going to talk about three of them because those three were the original posters that we had up and people voted on that night. The fourth is something that's kind of how we've brought together some of the other recommendations that we found from the other dialogues that we did. So what I wanted to first explain again, that what I'm going to talk about is what people originally voted on, and then we're going to kind of move into talking about what we're actually recommending as a commission. They're a little bit different because we were incorporating this dialogue project with the other two that Cam talked about, but also because we went through our own processes as commission of revealing the feedback we got and seeing what we thought would be the best areas for immediate action. So the three that were the top winners in order were first, Stable Housing and Stable Communities. So unsurprising to all of you that underlying everything in our lives is whether we have a place to go at night that's safe and secure, and that has to do with how safe our communities are, that has to do with the economic resiliency of our communities, it kind of underlies everything. So in lots of ways, it shouldn't be surprising that that would be the number-one thing people are concerned about, no matter what we're talking about, if it's safety and justice, or welcoming people to our communities, or anything like that. So a couple of the key things that we talked with folks about when they were voting were really around the lawful source of income being accepted as, whatever your source of income, it has to be accepted for rent, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. We also talked more about inclusionary zoning to make sure we're building and creating more affordable housing in the community, and also, a topic that came up was banning the box so that we make sure we're giving everyone opportunities to come back into the community when they've served their time, and have a place to live and grow and contribute. So those are some of the main things that came up with the Stable Housing, Stable Communities. Number two that got the most votes was this idea of ladder up. Now, all of us will tell you, this probably got the most votes because Joshua wanted it to. And I'm not saying it was a rigged process, but I am saying, if you came to those events, you probably know he was selling it pretty hard. But this is a really, again, thinking about those underlying issues that impact how safe our communities are and whether we're able to create justice. So thinking, so that one's thinking more about creating economic opportunities, partnering with community organizations that are doing work around upskilling and business incubators and things like that. So we're thinking about, how do we get people to greater economic stability with better jobs, better skills, or the ability to start their own business, if that's the right path, and making those opportunities more available across communities and communities where they haven't traditionally been available. So again, we'll talk a little bit more about our specific recommendations in that area in a little bit. The third top vote-getter was around this idea of ongoing mandatory training for first responders. We know that there is training already occurring, and this recommendation was really around the idea of making that more of an ongoing part of how we're working with first responders every year, around implicit bias, cultural competency, de-escalation tactics, lots of different things like that. Just wanting to make sure those that are putting their lives on the line have the tools that they need to help keep our communities safe and just. So those are the top three vote-getters, again, in that original Bridging the Gap voting opportunity. Because that was such, it was so important to us that community voice was in this, and that was the whole design of this project, so we also tonight wanted to invite some of the folks who participated in the different dialogue opportunities to come back and talk a little bit about why they participated, what they got out of that, and then also what we're hoping they will do with that. So I think the first person we're going to turn it to is a video, right? Or somebody? Yup, okay. So Chelsea Lepley participated in our Safety and Justice Dialogues, couldn't be here tonight, but made a video to share her thoughts.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Lepley, and I'm really sorry I can't be there in person, but I'm really grateful for the chance to share some of my reflections on the recommendations. A lot of you probably know me because of my involvement in the Capital Park Neighborhood Association. I also serve on both the Board and the Policy Committee for the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, and I was privileged to facilitate some of the housing conversations at the Bridging the Gap events. Excuse me. I wanted to address the recommendations related to housing access, affordability, and quality. I'm really glad that that recommendation emphasizes stability, because research and common sense both dictate that we can't have a strong and stable community without also having residents with safe and stable homes. That's why the Polk County Housing Trust Fund's annual campaign is called Stable, Steady, Strong. The first recommendation, 1A, is to protect lawful sources of income, like vouchers, disability, and other benefits. This is important, and I support it, as does the rest of the Polk County Housing Trust Fund Policy Committee, but it's not a panacea. It can't keep people from discriminating, but it can provide some basic legal protections that send an important message. The fourth one, 1E, is to strengthen our neighborhood inspections. We can't do it with just policy, though, we also have to staff the program. It has several benefits, including the one listed there, to make sure that people live in safe homes with dignity. It can also make service delivery more equitable, though. Complaint-based enforcement perpetuates disparities. So I look forward to knowing that our rentals are inspected on a regular schedule, regardless of whether the residents know how to file a formal complaint or not. Frequent inspections also help maintain the quality of our housing stock better, because having enough inspectors to do proactive inspections also means that we can find problems and correct them before they're severe. I also just want to conclude by saying I'm really grateful to the city and to the commission in particular for doing the work to identify these barriers to opportunity and to moving the conversation forward about how to address them. We can't repair historic or ongoing injustices by just hoping the unfairness goes away. So you can't just put an unfair system on autopilot and think it'll somehow arrive at some fair outcome. You've got to intervene directly and decisively, and so we do have a ways to go, but it means a lot to know that we have so many people in the city willing to do the really challenging and important work that the commission is undertaking and recommending that we continue to do. Thank you again.
Great. Next, I'd like to invite Wasan Waham. Wasan was a very active member of our Refugee and Immigrant Advisory Subcommittee, and she's going to share a little bit about her experience.
Thanks so much. My name's Wasan Waham. Thanks so much for coming and for your time. I would mention about four points today, and with suggestion an example. The first one is, offer training to the landlord to increase awareness about culture and language difference. So this point is very important, because very necessary to provide cultural awareness training to understand of the different cultural rules and behavior to exhibit, how to react to these differences, and how to avoid misunderstanding to improve the relationship between the landlords and the community. The community, I mean refugee and immigrant. As a refugee advisory and case manager, refugee resettlement program, and housing specialist, so I found that we have many landlords in Des Moines area, they are very welcome with refugees, but because the language barriers and different culture behavior will create some issues between the community and the landlord. So for example, why we don't provide house training with the city of Des Moines for landlord with the easy image that can understand for the people who doesn't speak English? Why we don't provide interpretation surface when we sign the lease to understand the term and condition? Des Moines annual inspection and license for the landlord, because some of the refugee and immigrant, they live a long time refugee come, so they don't know how they keep the house clean, they don't know how they fix the stove, how they work by using the bathroom. So for this easy, like, I think, city of Des Moines for inspection, they give hard time for the landlord to do the inspection process and how they pass this one, the same time, the landlord will spend too much money to fix the damage, because the refugees left the house without any 30-day notice, and no one knows about them. So I love to balance the relationship between the landlord and community. The second option, the second point is, access and approve the city of Des Moines hiring process for different culture. For example, sorry about my accent, because I'm speaking eight languages. So in general, the long-term success of any workplace for a device body of talent that's can bring fresh ideas, perspective, and review to their work. The challenge that device poses, therefore, is ending the managers to come to us with a mixture of agenda, culture background, age, lifestyle, respond to their business opportunities more readily and gratefully, but actually, city of Des Moines is the top of the list, and I'm sorry to say that, but I have the proof. There's no equal employment opportunity, there's no justice. This is limitation number one. When they hiring with HR, the process, the training, the assignment job, transfer fare, use the company space, layoff, firing, wages, other term, internship, volunteers, high education opportunity, and I have example, my resume is very professional, and I have four copies. Thank you. I'm surprised, because actually, I'm construction engineer with nine years' experience. The third point is, adopt a language to access policy to ensure the key of city of Des Moines. So I'm so thankful for all Des Moines police officer, because I feel safe when I, they are around, especially in Des Moines area, when I pick up my refugees from Des Moines International Airport. And friendly people ready to help, but improved service will bring more benefit to the police department. And I guess here, like, we have very good examples, Sergeant Lord, who do cultural orientation part in any refugee resettlement agencies, with Catholic Charities, with USC. And when he speak different language, I think that will improve more the community confident to speak with him. So by distributing and hiring, police officer depends on community and language, will make the community more understanding the police rules and their services. Community will be more welcome, comfortable, when they see the police officer speaks the same language unable to understand them. Or the suggestion above is working great, if applied in the right way, that mean all police officer will follow up, not just the first couple month, after that, we can touch it. Number four, offer additional scoring point for city of Des Moines job-seeking applicant for language skills. In my personal view and experience, from working as a professional interpreter, to cover social, housing, health, education need and community, by providing interpretation in eight languages, I never get paid for these languages, or recognize from any workplace or HR in city of Des Moines to give me job as inspector, entry level, anything in engineering. So for a new job in my career, HR people, they rejected my application, because my English is not my native language, or have some hearing issue by phone interview. But if American person, with all my respect, and I'm American too, who speak another language besides his English, native language, will pay for him for sure. Payment, benefit, hiring process, is connection matter, because there's no justice. And I don't have any relative or family here connect me with engineering job, or my relative working in city of Des Moines to accept my application. Thus, from the real life. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you. Next, I want to invite Erica Bars. Erica is, I mean, pretty much the reason LGBTAC has been successful, so she has done a ton of work in this area, is going to talk a little bit about that.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank both the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission and the city council for having me and allowing me to speak today. My name is Erica Bars. I am the secretary for the LGBT Advisory Council, and I am also the communications and grants coordinator at One Iowa, which is a statewide LGBTQ advocacy organization. So a few of the recommendations that are included in the Bridging the Gap plan are drawn fairly word-for-word from recommendations that LGBTAC heard with a lot of frequency in the listening sessions that we hosted in 2018, and I wanted to talk about and expand on those. So the first one is item 3C, and that one is updating city forms that collect demographic information to include gender diversity and sexual orientation. So collecting data from these forms that collects sexual orientation and also collects gender information in a way that's inclusive of trans and non-binary folks is mutually beneficial for both the city and the general public. So this data will help give the city a better picture of the public and who is utilizing services, and to be able to help improve those services. And it will also help in a big way LGBTQ residents just to feel seen. That was something we heard a lot in the listening sessions, that LGBTQ residents in Des Moines really just want to feel seen by the city, and this would go a long way for that. It'll also prompt Des Moines residents who aren't LGBTQ to think about sexual orientation and gender identity, and as it applies to them, which is also a good and important thing. And I would be happy, and I know other members of LGBT Advisory Council would also be happy to help city council as you are looking into best practices to both make sure that you're asking these questions in a way that gets the data you need for, in the way that you need for, like, particular funding or other things, and also helps to respect the identities of residents. The next item is 3D, so just the next one. Modify and update citywide building codes to require single-stall restrooms be gender-inclusive. This is a really easy and inexpensive way to help trans and non-binary people in Des Moines feel safer in public spaces. At most, because we're talking about single space, single-stall spaces, a change in signage would probably be the most expensive thing for this, so this, it would be very inexpensive. And in addition to benefiting trans and non-binary folks, it'll also provide more restroom options for parents with small children, caretakers with careeas, other folks who need restroom assistance, and by not limiting these single-stall restrooms by gender arbitrarily, so giving everybody more options in that regard. And also, this will be fairly easy to implement, because best-practice language already exists for putting this type of language in city code. For example, the 2018 International-- For example, the 2018 International Plumbing Code includes this language regarding single-user toilet options that can be input into Des Moines existing policy. And I know that that's a conversation that when I was director of policy and advocacy, Keenan Crowe has been having with some members of city council. So that would be a good, a good thing. And I think that's it for me. Thank you so much.
All right. Next, I'd like to invite Samuel Wilson, another very active member of our Refugee and Immigrant Subcommittee to talk a little bit about his experience.
Good evening to all and thank you for having me. My name is Samuel B.K. Vidi Wilson. I'm from Liberia, West Africa. I've been in Des Moines for 10 years now. Des Moines is a wonderful place, especially for family. My beautiful wife is certified nurse aide and works at Wesley Life. We have six beautiful children. Wesley now 29 and Lisa 24. Work at Wells Fargo after graduating from Lincoln High School in Des Moines Community era college, Des Moines era community college. We have excuse me, we also have Faith who attends Lincoln South and Love attends Boring Middle School. She's 14, Faith is 15. We have Theresa who is 20, is attending Grand View University, who is aspiring to be a medical doctor. And then we have Sam, who is the smartest one seven years old. He's at San Antonio Elementary School. In 2015, we went from renting to owning a home. I have a master's in organizational leadership from Grand View University. And I also work at Wells Fargo since my arrival in 2009. I support many African organizations and the former chair of Africans in Iowa for empowerment, also known as AFI. It is a nonprofit committed to empowering minorities, particularly African immigrants, providing them with the basic tools they need to be successful, whether it's in financial literacy, academic literacy, computer literacy, or say if we're seeing eradicating disparity and extreme poverty, true diversity and inclusion. I'm also a proud member of the Refugee and Immigrant Advisory Subcommittee, yes. What Des Moines is making great efforts in bridging the gap in disparity. More needs to be done. And I strongly believe if those in leadership who make the rules, set policies and make decisions, know and understand the people they represent and govern, the huge disparity gap in Des Moines and across the United States will be bridged. I recall in 2014, when we launched AFI at the World Food Prize, audience included city and state officials. Something that struck me and many guests at the launching was that African immigrants and African-Americans are one and the same. Many thought once you are black, you are African-American. But since then, from our many interactions, especially with the Des Moines Police Department, relationships have greatly improved because they now know all blacks are not African-Americans as the national census is designed. Africans have a unique culture, civilization and way of life completely different from that of African-Americans. Understanding this is very important for the city and elected officials. That is why I'm here in support of the action steps identified by the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission, championed by the city mayor, Mayor Kami, specifically action step number four, ongoing mandatory training for all city staff. One, implicit bias and de-escalation training offered by a nationally recognized trainer to office responders. And two, implicit bias diversity inclusion equity, poverty simulation, cultural proficiency, institutional racism and all cultural sensitivity and more training to all city of Des Moines staff, executives and elected officials. African immigrants react completely different informed by their cultural background to first responders, city and elected officials. So it is very critical those first responders, city and elected officials know and understand this community. This will prepare them better for how they interact with this community and how they serve or represent them. And this will go a long way in improving relationships between the two groups, bridging the gap in disparity. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks. And then I think finally we have video from another participant in the Bridging the Gap Safety and Justice Dialogues who's joining us via video, Megan Saponamoa.
Hi, my name is Megan Saponamoa. This is my fourth year living in the city of Des Moines. This is also my fourth year teaching with Des Moines Public Schools, which is why I unfortunately am unable to attend the meeting this evening as we have parent-teacher conferences. But in place of me being there, I have filmed some videos to share my experiences. But I apologize in advance with my video skills. So thanks for bearing with me. Another thing that our city really needs to think long and hard about is creating a policy that prohibits all city staff from inquiring about citizenship status unless required by law. One night around 10:00 PM, my husband was driving home from a basketball league game played on the east side by the fairgrounds. As he was driving home, he was pulled over by one police car initially. He sat in the car waiting for about 10 minutes until another police car showed up to the scene. One of the police officers finally approached him and asked for his license and registration. But after briefly glancing at his license and reviewing his name, the officer asked where he was from. My husband responded and said he was from Des Moines, but the officer kept asking questions. After not getting the answer he clearly was looking for, the officer asked for my husband's immigration documents. At this point, a third police car had pulled up to the scene. Being the smart man that my husband is, his immigration documents and his green card were not on him for fear of losing something important and/or a robbery or something of that nature happening. The officer walked back to his car and a second officer came back 10 minutes later. Again, he asked for my husband's immigration documents. My husband explained that they were at our house as they should be. And this unnecessary cycle of questioning continued for about another 15 to 20 minutes. Eventually, the initial officer shared that my husband had a taillight out and let him go with a warning. But this was only after being pulled over for more than an hour and 15 minutes and having to go through some unnecessary questioning in the process. My husband was compliant. He provided the appropriate documentation needed when pulled over, your license, your registration. But somehow that wasn't enough for these officers. And so I think we really need to consider what did his legal immigration status have to do with his taillight being out? I often worry when he's driving by himself, especially at night, that something similar but much worse will happen again. And the thing is, we shouldn't have to live in fear and neither should the other immigrant and refugee families in Des Moines.
So please join me in thanking everybody, all of those people for sharing their reflections. We wanted to especially Erica because it's her birthday and she's spending it with us. So happy with Erica. We thought that was really important to provide some of the context for the kind of conversations we've had the privilege of hearing over the past almost two years now in these dialogues about the kind of experiences and lives people have been able to build in Des Moines and how those have resulted in what we think would be some key ways to move the city forward.
Thank you, Emily. At this time, the commission will go forth in introducing our recommendations to city council. Between each recommendation that we introduce, we'll leave some room for remarks from the mayor and then see if there's any action that the city council would like to take at this time. The first recommendation, you will hear from Isaiah Knox on quality affordable and stable housing. Then you will hear from Emily Shields on economic sustainability in the ladder-up program. And then myself, I will speak about city programs and workforce demographics. And then the last immediate recommendation that we'll talk about is ongoing mandatory training. You hear from Claudia Shackle on that.
Isaiah Knox, commissioner. First and foremost, Masara Menisha, where are you? Wait, please. Give them a hand for all the hard work. All right. So I get to talk about the number one winner, stable housing in stable communities. And we all know that lack of affordable housing is a huge issue here in Des Moines. Okay? We want to make sure that the commission recommends that lawful source of income is a protected class through a city ordinance. What that means is that too many landlords that right now make it unavailable for tenants to get a house, unless, get an apartment or a house unless they make almost three times the income of the rent. We would make sure that if lawful source of income is a protected class, that you can use not just your income, but also you can use your social security benefits, your veteran benefits, child support, alimony, or any kind of Section 8 voucher as income towards that rent voucher, or towards that rent. 14 states currently do it across the country. Two cities in Iowa currently do it, Iowa City and Marion. Marion of all places. We're better than Marion.
You know I grew up there, right?
I didn't know that. It's right next to Sierra Rapids, right? The suburb of Sierra Rapids. And based on the Des Moines Municipal Housing Authority, there's 100 vouchers per month out there. They issue 100 vouchers per month. The number of Housing Choice vouchers is 3,500, 3,500-plus. Tenants stay in those units for seven and a half years. So they're staying there, they're paying the rent. The Housing Choice voucher waitlist closed with 4,000-plus applicants in just two days. In November of 2018, there were about 300 families trying to find housing, but the landlords participated in about 650. Typically, it takes about, it takes 75% of people trying to use these vouchers over 30 days to find housing. And it takes 25% over 90 days to find housing. So mayor, that's our recommendation.
This is sort of a very special moment for me because usually I don't make recommendations. I sort of get the chance to listen to my city council members. But I think that all of us have participated in a number of these meetings with citizens and watched their response to these proposals and ideas. And quite frankly, again, I think at least for me and I think for the city council, everyone, I want to thank everybody for your participation in this because again, these are efforts that we have to move things forward and find solutions. And I think, Isaiah, thank you for presenting the recommendation. I guess I would ask that the council give me any of your thoughts. But I think that one way to address our, you know, housing issues would be, by the way, interesting to me and as I talk to some of our staff, that it's my understanding that 20% of these vouchers often come back because they're not accepted by some of these landlords. They're turned down. And I think that that's one of the important parts that was pointed out that we need to have it put into a ordinance of sorts that we are going to make lawful source of income a protected class to ensure that these incomes that are generated from these sources are accepted by these landlords. So I would suggest to the council that we direct the city manager to work with legal to update the human rights ordinance as well as neighborhood inspection ordinances to have some lawful source of income protections be put into those ordinances. And if you would, Mr. Manager, to report back to the city council with language, let's say by the 25th of March at our council meeting so that we can, and you know, give us your ideas before so that we can kind of have some good thoughtful discussion around this and move some of these forward. So I open it up and any of the council members have any thoughts or ideas? Are we supportive of that?
I'm supportive.
Bill?
I always have one thing.
All right, Bill's got something to say.
I always look over to city legal. Is there any way we can put some teeth into it by putting some penalties for people that flaunt the law in that respect? 20% return vouchers is unacceptable, totally unacceptable. Another way we're going to get it through to some of these landlords is putting a financial pension. So is that something we can do in forming a protected class here?
Ordinance violation will include an opportunity for penalty. Be faster, Josh. The ordinance violation, an ordinance violation would have an opportunity for penalty. And council can even structure that penalty somewhat, but we are limited by statute with the amount of penalty.
Should be on the upper end.
Right. And again, Mr. Manager and legal, we would ask that you get those recommendations back so that we can have discussion and hopefully move them forward by the last meeting in March. Should we take a vote on it? I mean, since we're sort of in, we
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to move it. I think a vote would be certainly appropriate. In this particular item, you know, we've had informal discussions about it. And I think there's pretty good consensus among the council that we need to move this forward. And we've heard from the community on this particular issue as well. That's one of the value, one piece of many in terms of the value that the Bridging the Gap process brought out. The listening and the understanding of the problem, the statistics, the amount of time it takes folks, once they get a voucher, to find a place that will accept it. The fact that we have that number of folks who are not even able to use it. It's not going to solve everything that we have going on with affordable housing, but it is a piece and a step forward and it will allow us to then move and focus on that next step as we improve lives, certainly for the 18% to 20% who struggle to find even a place to use their voucher and for everyone who's using that voucher who has to spend more time than they need. And that might be time away from, time away from a job that further strains, further strains their family, or time away from a whole host of activities that creates a whole ripple effect of problems. So the stability of this housing is really fundamental and a great step forward. So I thank the commission for bringing that to us and the mayor for his comments and everyone else on council. And I will move this item with the recommendation and come back for consideration of an actual ordinance by March 25.
Right. Just to move forward, we're sort of sitting in an official meeting. We've called it to order, we've taken
Your items are not listed, so normally your direct
Okay.
The direct staff.
So we'll just direct staff to come back. Thank you very much.
Great. I get to introduce our second recommendation for immediate action. And this comes from the area of ladder up or improving economic stability. What we're suggesting to the city council is the idea of creating a $50,000 pilot grant program so that the city can partner with organizations in the community that are already doing great things around helping people to build their skills for better jobs, to start small businesses and to bring those kinds of opportunities to communities that have that have traditionally been locked out from them. So this would be an opportunity for the city to contribute funds to things that are happening, to build on those, to build the capacity of community organizations doing this work, and to build the opportunities for those programs to reach more people. There are a number of examples of communities who have grant programs like this. We're suggesting a relatively modest amount now, so that we can test some of how those strategies might work in Des Moines, and we would be happy to work with the council on design, better designing, what that grant program would look like, would be happy to administer it through the commission, and again, thinking about building those public-private partnerships that really help us achieve that economic stability. So, Mr. Mayor, that is our recommendation.
Again, I think that as we listen to neighbors and the commission make comments and talk about how we can help, and again, trying to find solutions that actually lift people up, I think that it's a great recommendation, and thank you, Emily, and the commission for bringing it forward. It's, I think this fund would give organizations that can provide learning opportunities and help our residents, you know, to navigate the process, sometimes which is a little cumbersome and a little complicated from time to time, of being economically self-sufficient to help people get there. I think it's a pilot program that has lots of merit, and hopefully will produce results from our participants and the people in such a positive way. And to get our residents and entrepreneurs thinking and planning, and hopefully, Mr. Manager, and council and citizens, this is just sort of a quick jumpstart and a boost, because we got to get them beyond fifty thousand dollars. I mean, we want everybody thinking, you know, how do we move this forward? How do we do it? I think to have seed money and to be able to find it in our budget. And I know, I'm not going to advocate for it, for the passage of it, but I would tell you, Mr. Manager, that I hope that if there is a vote in March, that you would look at some of those funds to possibly help fund this kind of a program. So I would direct you, as the city manager, to report back to the city council with an answer on where in the Neighborhood Improvement Initiative, or maybe even CDBG funding with Community Development Department, could fund and create a pilot program to be administered, hopefully, maybe Economic Development, but specifically through the Civil and Human Rights Department to help our citizens. Any thoughts?
I would agree, and I think this is a unique program for the city of Des Moines, to invest in something like this. I think a lot of other agencies have been doing it, and for Des Moines to put in mind to show the importance of really doing the ladder-up. There's a lot of other groups doing, so I think we can leverage those dollars in a greater way, and if we all work together, be more uniform in how we want to deliver different programs, so that everybody's out doing something, but how do we bring everybody together and bringing the dollars together, I think will help leverage that and really help move this area up, because it really does need to be, it's strengthening all the neighborhoods and all the citizens, and I think it's a good idea.
I agree.
I've just got one thing that I want to request be a part of this. Anytime we do a pilot, I want to make sure that we have metrics that we're looking at on the front end to how we evaluate success, whether that be, you know, dollars we're leveraging, partnerships. I don't know exactly what the metrics would be for that, but I would look for some guidance on metrics, so we know, we know what our investment is getting us, and we know how to evaluate that going forward.
And, so, Bill, thumbs up, good idea?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, turn it back.
All right. Now to our third recommendation. We actually have two slides on this one. The first being implementation and enforce, to implement and enforce Des Moines Police Department policy that focuses on continuing positive interaction between residents and all police officers. This would require police officers pass out information cards. Each would include, which would include officer's names, the officer's name, badge number, phone number, website information, and subcommittee commit, or submit, website information to submit a comment or complaint. It would also mandate that all, that the practice to be utilized at all encounters with residents and visitors. The impact for this would be to create a channel for communication, resulting in increased trust and accountability between both the police officers and community members. In addition to that, we also recommend that we implement and enforce the Des Moines Police Department policy of focus on continuous positive interaction between residents and police officers. The second mandate would be to mandate community engagement and provide compis, excuse me, compensatory hours with non-neighborhood-based service delivery officers, volunteers at community events, and participate in community-led efforts. We believe right now, currently, there are a hundred and seven community programs, but not all officers participate in those, especially those that hold desk jobs. We also believe we can help develop a data tracking system to secure all officers are complying with these required commitments. And as of right now, we know that neighborhood-based police officers are doing it, but that's only thirteen officers, when there's over three hundred officers in our force. We think that, again, that they're doing a great job, but to better engage with the police department as a whole, we really want to encourage or mandate that all officers are required to do some type of community engagement. In order to do this, we do believe we need to create some type of incentive, whether it be pay or compensatory time for officers to work overnight shifts. And then we also would like to help partner with community organizations to provide a list of opportunities, including officer-led know-your-rights trainings. This is, we've found best practices for this in Fendale, Michigan, where police officers, the police commission has dedicated community engagement hours for all of their officers, as well as with the Atlanta Police Foundation and Atlanta Police Department. And additionally, the city of Portland, Oregon, requires all officers to hand out business cards, even when they're not asked to. Again, the impact is to create a channel for communication, resulting in an increased trust and accountability between both the police officers and the community.
So hopefully, this will help create a channel and communication between our residents and visitors and police officers in the city of Des Moines. And so I guess at this point, Mr. Manager, I would like to direct you to work with the police department to create and enact a department-wide policy for officers to provide information cards for all matters involving questioning residents, visitors, or police stops, including but not limited to, you know, temporary detainments and things like that, and work with the, with the police department, and certainly legal to make sure that happens. And I'll ask the council, we agree, good idea? Okay. Secondly, community members are seeing police officers as volunteers and participate in neighborhoods and large community programs. I mean, we see it, I often go to neighborhood meetings very regularly with police officers, and we interact with citizens, and I would encourage our officers, not just MBSD officers who already do it, but others to volunteer and do it as well. And to make sure that this happens department-wide, and so that we are breaking down the stereotypes from both the police department and the community in order to build better and stronger trusting relationships, I would like to encourage all of our police officers to be community ambassadors, and to work to build relationships with the community members. And I would direct the manager to work with the police department to create a policy to give back to the city council with language and report on how it might be implemented into practice. And this might take a little bit of detail, and so I think maybe if you could do it by first meeting in May, that would be a timeframe. We're giving you a few things in between then to work on. But council, okay with that? Everybody? All right? Great recommendations. I'll give it back. Pass it down to Claudia. Okay, Claudia.
Thank you so much. Buenos noches.
She's going to lose her...
Buenos noches. I'm Claudia Shabel, and I will present the last recommendation from the commission. The fourth recommendation is ongoing mandatory training for city staff. We're recommending for immediate implementation that the city allocate resources, including staff positions, to offer mandatory and annual trainings to all city staff, which includes full-time, part-time, and seasonal staff. We also want to offer this same trainings to boards, commissions, and elected leaders. Some of the topics and themes that we are recommending for training are implicit bias, general diversity and inclusion, equity, poverty, cultural proficiency, and institutional racism. Why is this important? It's important because it will equip the staff with knowledge, skills, and a very good understanding as to how better serve our population, our changing population. According to Pew Research Center, by 2055, the U.S. will not have one single racial/ethnic majority. That is coming to Des Moines as well. Much of this demographic changes are being driven by immigration. Millennials are forty-three percent non-white. So we really want the staff to understand how to better serve this changing community. It is our understanding that currently, city of Des Moines staff are not required to attend any form of diversity and inclusion training, so this will mitigate that right away. We also would like to recommend that we include community members in the Des Moines Police Department implicit bias training for real-life engagement exercises, and offer community-focused training opportunities in the community. Let's talk a little bit about best practices. The city of Dubuque, Iowa, has a team of staff and community members as trainers to deliver the mandated cultural competency training to all city employees. City of Tacoma, Washington, requires all city staff, including temporary and seasonal employees, to participate in Equity 101 Training, which covers issues focusing on the national/local history, which is important, racism, cultural sensitivity, and overall diversity. So, Mr. Mayor, that's our recommendation. Thank you.
Well, to everybody, I think that training on cultural competency, poverty, bias, equity, inclusion, all that is crucial for our staff, and as our city continues to grow and become more diverse. I remember hearing some of the latest, our new council member Connie Boson and I talk about it occasionally, about how diverse the school system is in the city of Des Moines compared to when we were in school, and that, yeah, and how, quite frankly, they speak over a hundred languages in the schools today. And quite frankly, I believe that there's over countries of origin, there's about a hundred countries of origin. And so we really are a melting pot. We're a great place and an opportunity, and for all these other things that we're talking about ladder-up, we need to show all of our citizens support and show them that we're there for them. And so we need to ensure that we're providing excellent service, including all of our elected officials and our residents regardless of their place of origin. And I think that these trainings, Mr. Manager, will help us better understand the community we serve, and to lead to hiring of a more diverse staff that is reflective of our community. And hopefully, as we implement this program, our partners that serve some of the same people in our political jurisdictions, the school system in the county, and other entities will follow suit, that we are meeting the challenges and the opportunities that will continue to present themselves as we grow and become more diverse. So, Mr. Manager, I would like to direct you to report back to the city council on a, sort of an outline of the training and a budget to do so, and let's talk about when and how we're going to implement that plan. And I'm not going to give you until May to do that. I'd like to hear back by the last meeting in March, March twenty-fifth, I think, to give us sort of an outline to get that done. Any other thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've got one more.
You've got one more thought? Okay.
I've got one other recommendation. You know, I think that, and maybe, are you going to talk about housing incentives?
Yep.
No? So, all right, I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Okay, thanks.
I was going to jump right on it, so...
So those were the four recommendations that we, that the commission wanted to recommend for immediate impact. But over the conversations that the commission has had over the past few weeks, as we've been going through all of the information that we've received from the community dialogues and from our, from our subcommittees, we felt that there were three more recommendations that we'd like to put forth that we felt were some low-hanging fruit, just the things that we could do even immediately now, even though they aren't the immediate impacts that we spoke of. So as you mentioned, we have, we'll be talking about housing incentives, prohibiting city staff, or required about citizenship, and as well as implementing a process for residents and visitors to file complaints and concerns with the civil, Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission. At this time, I'll have Commissioner Rochelle speak to that first recommendation.
Our first recommendation, they're on page twelve, the second slide, city programs and workforce demographics. We believe that housing incentives are important to encourage all police officers and other city employees to work and live in Des Moines. In terms of the impact regarding this, being residents of the city they serve, including the staff, will have a deeper understanding of the community's assets as well as the challenges, and also contribute to the city's tax base. Thank you.
Also, under city programs and workforce demographics, a policy that prohibits all city staff from inquiring about citizenship status unless required by law incentives. The impact would strengthen the city commitment of being a compassionate community and creates a uniform code of conduct to avoid unnecessary inquiry about immigration status. One other quick little thing, there was an example earlier about a stop, and there was a waste of approximately an hour, and that's resources. So this would, this would even help to promote the state.
And then we have implement a process for residents and visitors of Des Moines to file complaints and concerns about police encounters with the civil and human rights departments, and this will allow the residents and the visitors to feel, to know that they have a neutral third party, that they can initiate a complaint and concern about the police encounters.
Is that it?
Yep. Oh, we'll sort.
Some additional good ideas, some of those we're not seeing up here, but I think that the, our commissioners have thought about a number of these issues and have brought them this evening, and I think have talked to a number of us, if we, as we have moved forward, and I think we, as a council, have discussed some of these as well. But, you know, I think it's important that we have our employees hopefully want to live in the city of Des Moines. I mean, they serve our citizens, they're here, and I think that if there are things that we can do, Mr. Manager, to find some incentive... that we can do, Mr. Manager, to find some incentives of some sort to, to help encourage them to come here. I mean, obviously we can't restrict where they are from in an application and we certainly want to hire the most qualified people, but we want our employees to hopefully live in the city that they serve and have, it will help them to have a better understanding of, of the needs and of our citizens and of the community as a whole. And, you know, it's, it's about being a neighbor and that's how we build empathy and, and how we build understanding hopefully with all of our citizens. And I think that's how we can grow together. So I would like to ask you to work with your staff and come back with some ideas and a program designed and implement that we could potentially as a council move forward and at least consider. And I think that this is going to be a little wide and a little deep, so let's, let's say about May 6th, that work, first meeting in May? Can you get that done? Okay. Committing the policy that prohibits city staff from inquiring about citizenship and status unless required by law. You know, we, uh, last year worked on a compassionate city resolution and we moved that forward and we worked with our Civil and Human Rights Director and, and talked to a number of our commissioners as well as our city council and, and we unanimously voted on it. And quite frankly, we don't work for the federal government. We, we're here to protect all of our citizens and residents and people that are visitors here. And they're, generally speaking, their immigration status has nothing to do with their services that we provide our, our citizens and our residents. And therefore unless required by law, and there may be some instances, Mr. Attorney, that it would be, I'm not quite sure what they are because again, we're not functioning for the federal government. We're trying to protect our, our, the people that are here in the city of Des Moines. So no matter what department it is, I, I'd like to have the city manager work with all necessary departments to draft a policy that would very clearly draw out, a, a policy that would hopefully prohibit any actions from city employees regarding asking people about their, their, their citizenship status. And I'd like, if you would, to look at getting that back to us by May 6th as well. Council, anybody? We okay with, with these? Okay. Also, we talked about, there's, it's been addressed and the residents can now contact Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Department to file a formal complaint and concern about police interactions. And I would like to direct our city manager to ensure that the police department has trained the Civil and Human Rights Departments on the intake process and give council a, a status update on that, if you will, please, by March 25th. And also in a, if we, did you want to cover any of these or we, it's sort of the end of yours because I've got one more?
Yeah, we're getting close. We do have a strategy for the other recommendations.
Okay. Let me turn it back to.
Sorry, this is kind of a quick, just sort of all-encompassing one. We're really excited for the actions that have been proposed tonight and I hope all of us will be at some of those city council meetings to hear their report and see what happens from there. But we know we're sort of just scratching the surface on some of our recommendations tonight, some of the things for immediate action. So we want to propose that we continue this good working relationship with the city council through some committees or working groups around the remaining recommendations that we have so that we can ensure those get full consideration and that we work together on how they could be implemented.
Absolutely. And, and Mr. Manager, it might be that, that we have some, some work sessions and as we present some of these so that we get sort of a comprehensive discussion going on between the council and, and the Civil and Human Rights Commissioners and make sure that we're sort of in, in lockstep concerning the direction because I think they've done an awful lot of work and so is the council, but we're here to serve our citizens and I think we want to make sure we're continuing to move in the right direction on that. So thanks for that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes our recommendations. You guys, the community members, you guys have been hearing from us all night. Now this is the time and agenda that we really want to get a chance to hear from you. Did you have something, Josh?
I would find just making one or two more remarks.
Okay.
There were a couple of things and I, I really liked the idea, and I think I've shared this with other council members, but of committee work, I think that could be applicable not just to our work with the Civil and Human Rights Commission, but perhaps broader than that and that we should maybe be looking at that. I did want to make a note of, of one other thing. I know there's some members of the community here who've come and talked to the council on similar issues, a couple of the items that are addressed. And we didn't talk specifically, although I think it's in the printed materials about a recommendation on implicit bias training and de-escalation training for first responders. And, and I know a, a number of other initiatives or policy ideas came up. Wanted to just clarify that we're still expecting to get a status update on that from the manager sometime in March. And so that's going to be complimentary of these efforts, but we'd initially talked about it maybe a little earlier, but that is still coming and we still expect to have that piece of the conversation and it ties in with a number of the issues raised here tonight. And just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
And that is accurate, Mayor. We would intend to report back on some of the other public comments that have been made at council meetings by that same March 25th date.
Yeah, and I think that the majority of what Councilman Manalbaum is pointing out, I think is in that fourth recommendation, but I think he's very specifically pointed out, so I think it's a good point.
Thank you, Councilman, for clarifying that. This is the opportunity, again, like I said, for us to hear from you. What we're gonna do for the next five to 10 minutes is actually break out into some small group sessions with council members and commissioners. If this first big table over here, we will have a conversation around the affordable and stable housing with Commissioners Knox, Hunt, Rushing, and Councilmember Josh Manalbaum. At the second big table, we'll be having a conversation about the ladder up program with Commissioners Shields and Oya and the Councilmember Mayor Freck County. At the third big table right here, we'll be having a conversation on city programs and workforce demographics with myself, Commissioner Garza, as well as councilmembers Gray and Westergaard. At this last table on this side to my right, it will be a conversation over the mandatory training with Commissioner Schabel, Manisha Paudel, as well as Councilmember Connie Bosin. So at this time, if we can split up into these small groups, again, we're gonna take about five to 10 minutes to have this conversation. All right. Thank you, guys. I know we, I know time is short on those conversations and just know that this is not gonna be the, the last time we have these conversations at, at any level. We encourage you guys to continue to come to our commission meetings and come to the, to the council meetings and bring up the issues that are important to you. Guess I'll go ahead and just give my final remarks and then pass it off to Mayor County. But again, as I mentioned at the, at the top, this is a two-and-a-half-year process that we've been going through. We don't expect this to be over, to be over, to be done overnight. We're really encouraged with the commitments that we got from council this evening and we're encouraged about the steps that we have to move forward. We appreciate the community feedback throughout this entire process that we've gotten so far. And like I said, we also encourage you guys to continue to give us feedback whether sitting down with us individually, coming to our commission meetings, coming to council meetings to ensure and holding our commission and council accountable to the measures and the recommendations that you as community members put forth and that we as a commission put forth to the council. Number one, I want to, if I, if I could get all of the commission staff to, to please stand and raise their hands. Hey, can we give them a round of applause? To be honest, Joshua and his team, we could not be doing this work without them. These are some of the hardest-working people for the city that I, that I see. I'm constantly getting emails at 10:00 PM at night from Joshua and then again at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, I don't think he really sleeps. And I know his team probably is not sleeping too because of him. So I appreciate you all because I know how much of a, of a driving force that Joshua is, but is much needed in this city. He pushes us as commissioners and I believe he pushes the community so we can be better. I'm understanding that we can all be better together. Finally, again, thank you all to the commissioners for the hard work that you guys have done over the past year and a half to two and a half years, just on this bridging the gap initiative. And I think I can speak for them all when we say we look forward to continuing to work with council and continuing to work with the community members to ensure that these recommendations get to, get, or actually get done. So thank you.
Cameron, thank you. And thanks to all of the commission members. You guys have done a great job and, you know, this is, as Cameron said, that we've been working over two years to find direction and find where we're going and to get to this point. And I've got to tell you, it's been really moving for me to interact with citizens from all over this city, whether they're youth or, or older, golden, experienced citizens. Everybody has a point of view, everybody has a dream, everybody hopes not only for themselves but for future generations that we all work together to create a place that families want to live, children want to come back to, and that they can have a job, raise a family, be safe, and that's all of us working together that are going to make that happen. And I think that I am hopeful that the dialogues that we have had over these, this last year and then even the ones that we've had here tonight, that we can continue on with those as citizens of the city of Des Moines, whether you're commissioners or neighborhood leaders or just a resident or an elected official. I want your input. I know we all do and I think it's very, very important that we continue to work together and move together. And I hope that we can engage our community in these dialogues moving forward, especially when we consider decisions on implementing recommendations such as these. So to all of you that have taken the time out of your evening and away from your families tonight, thank you for coming here and let's get together, let's work together and make Des Moines a better place for everybody. Thank you all for being here. Have a great evening.